Good evening. Let's call to order the City Council meeting for the business meeting of Florence City Council. If you please stand.
We pray for the wisdom to make decisions that are beneficial to the people represented here, empower us to speak honestly, reflect wisely, and vote with integrity. We seek your guidance tonight.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Carroll.
Present.
Ms. Chambers.
Here.
Mr. Wynn.
Here.
Ms. Kemper.
Here.
Ms. Wingo.
Here.
Mr. Osborne.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
We have minutes of the business meeting of August 27, 2024. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Mr. Carroll, second by Mr. Wynn. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we'll have a proclamation in honor of Constitution Week. We have members in attendance is Peggy Kennedy. She's a regent from the Daughters of the American Revolution, and she represents District 5, Boone County Chapter. The Kentucky Society of Daughters of the American Revolution is a women's service organization committed to promoting education, historic preservation, and patriotism. This chapter and county are named in honor of frontiersman Daniel Boone. It was Boone while acting as an agent of the Transylvania Company for Colonel Richard Henderson in March of 1775, who came to the Great Meadow with a party of 30 settlers. The group began clearing of the Wilderness Road for others to follow and established a settlement at Boonsborough in April of that year. So that's a little background on the Daughters of American Revolution, and we have a proclamation. Peggy, would you mind coming to the podium there? It says, "Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the garden of our liberties embodies the principles of limited government and a republic dedicated by rule to rule by law, and whereas September 17, 2024 marks the 237th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I, Julie Abashan, Mayor of the City of Florence, Kentucky, and on behalf of the members of Florence City Council proclaim the week of September 17 through September 23, 2024, as Constitution Week in the City of Florence, Kentucky." And Peggy, I'm going to have you step over with me, and we're going to do a photo. Peggy, do you want to talk about, you've got to have an upcoming fundraiser, I believe, a Bunko fundraiser, is that correct?
Yeah, we do.
If you go to the mic there, make sure it's turned, is it turned on?
It's one of the fundraisers for the chapter, and it helps in historic preservation and education and supporting the veterans, and it's at Emmanuel Church on the 18th, on Saturday the 28th.
All right, good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have proclamation in honor of City Government Month. Whereas civics education is important to ensure Kentucky children develop an interest in understanding of local government and their role in the community, whereas Kentucky academic standards for social studies require instruction on citizenship and local government for entry-level elementary school children, and whereas involving and informing students of local governments on their programs and duties can provide an opportunity for entire families to connect with vital city services and programs, whereas there are 412 active incorporated cities in Kentucky and more than half of the state's population lives in a city. Whereas City Government Month is a civics awareness campaign that educates elementary school students about city services by providing teacher lesson plans, student coloring and activity books, and classroom materials, and whereas City Government Month calls on city officials to get involved in their local schools and engaging elementary school students in city government. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I, Julie Abashan, Mayor of the City of Florence, Kentucky, and on behalf of the members of Florence City Council, do hereby proclaim September 2024 as City Government Month in the city, and encourage city officials and employees to collaborate with local elementary schools to educate students about city government and engage them in city services. And you know, we are very active with our local schools. Our police department does our DARE program. We have about, what, 800 kids that go through that every year. We do a youth and government program every March, and we have about, between anywhere between 5 and 700 kids, the fifth graders that come here through our campus. So it is definitely a connection that we want to make with our youth and have them understand the importance of city government. So it's a great opportunity to reflect on that and issue that proclamation tonight. We're going to go into our oath of office. This is for our police department, and we have three police officers tonight that will be swearing in. Chief?
Okay. Yeah, we're lucky to be swearing in three officers this evening. First, we're going to start with a lateral police officer, Jacob Johnson. If you can come on up, Jacob, please. Jacob is 30 years old and currently resides in Maesville, Kentucky, with his wife and three children. Jacob comes to Florence with over five years of law enforcement experience. Jacob previously worked with Maesville Independence Police Department. He is currently in our field training program, and we hope to get him out as a solo officer here shortly. We are excited to be adding Jacob and his experience to our department. Welcome, Jacob. Mayor, read the oath to you.
Should I do it in my own time?
Yes, please. Or we'll do Kayla and Amin next.
Okay. Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Kentucky so long as you remain a citizen thereof, that you will faithfully execute to the best of your ability the office of a police officer for the City of Florence, Kentucky according to law, and do further solemnly swear since the adoption of the present Constitution that you, being a citizen of this state, have not followed a duel with deadly weapons within this state nor out of it, nor have you sent or accepted or challenged to fight a duel with deadly weapons, nor have you acted as a second in carrying a challenge nor aided or assisted any person of those offenders in the name of God.
You said it.
Congratulations.
You can introduce your family and who you brought with you.
Okay. My wife, Hannah, is holding my, our youngest son, Cooper. My middle son is not paying attention. My middle is Lila Johnson. My mom and stepdad back there, Bonnie and Robbie Burns. Sister and her boyfriend are in the back.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
All right, next, we'll be swearing in two new recruits, Leila Robinson and Amin El Brahmi, if you guys would like to come up. Leila is 23 years old. She was born and raised in Massachusetts. After graduating high school in 2019, Leila insists in the Marine Corps. Leila served four years in the Marine Corps and did one deployment to Afghanistan. Leila currently resides in Williamstown, Kentucky with her husband, Logan. Leila previously worked with Orthocensi as a medical assistant before coming to Florence. So welcome, Leila. Next is Amin El Brahmi, is 32 years old and was born and raised in Tunisia. Amin moved to the United States in 2022 and received a certificate of naturalization in March of this year. He currently resides in Verona, Kentucky with his wife, Kayla, and their son. Amin is a member of the Army National Guard. Amin previously worked for the U.S. Department of State and the Boone County Detention Center. Leila and Amin will be starting the online portion of the academy next week, and then we'll report to Department of Criminal Justice Training in Richmond, Kentucky to complete their 18 weeks of basic training. Welcome, Amin and Leila.
Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Kentucky so long as you remain a citizen thereof, and that you will faithfully execute to the best of your ability the office of a police officer of the City of Florence, Kentucky according to law, and do you further solemnly swear since the adoption of the present Constitution that you, being a citizen of this state, have not followed a duel within this state nor out of it, nor have you sent or accepted a challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons, nor have you acted as a second in carrying a challenge nor aided or assisted any person of those offenders in the name of God. Congratulations.
Yes. Right here on the left is my husband, Logan, and then this is our mamaw, Phyllis, and then my niece, Whitley, and then my mother-in-law, Michelle, and then my sister-in-law, Jessica.
Thank you, guys, for coming.
My wife, Kayla. And since I moved here to the United States, she's been everyone to me, my best friend, my wife, my everything, basically. So, yeah.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you to all the families for sharing these officers with us. We will treat them like one of our own families. Next, we will call on Katie James, who is our Human Services Administrator for the City of Florence, to present a program called the Good Neighbor Program.
Why aren't you everybody leave?
Good evening. I just wanted to come and introduce a new program that we'll be rolling out in the next few weeks here at the city called the Good Neighbor Program. So we'll start with the program overview. So the Good Neighbor Program is designed to support residents who need assistance with routine outdoor tasks like mowing the grass, shoveling snow, raking leaves, cleaning gutters, and this initiative is particularly focused on helping elderly, disabled, or physically unable residents, ensuring they can maintain their homes and yards with dignity. And so there's three objectives with this program: to provide essential assistance, promote community engagement, and then organize and efficient matching. So to provide essential, essential, words challenged for me tonight, to provide essential assistance, the program will connect residents in need with volunteers who can help with tasks that may be challenging due to their age, a disability, or a physical limitation. Promoting community engagement by encouraging volunteerisms, this program will foster a stronger sense of community, building connections between neighbors, and creating a more supportive environment. And then organizing and efficient matching, the residents will be paired with volunteers based on their specific needs, their locations, and then the tasks that the volunteers would like to do. And so then how this program will work, for residents, for those in need of assistance, they'll sign up by providing specific information requested in any relevant medical or physical conditions, and then I will verify their eligibility for the program. Volunteers who are willing will also sign up, and they will specify their availability and the location that they'd like to work in, as well as preferred tasks. And then service delivery, I will match residents and volunteers together per the task, their availability, and just kind of ensuring that that is a smooth transition. And the next, we have why this program matters. So the Good Neighbor Program not only helps residents maintain their homes, but it will also strengthen the bonds within the community. By participating, both volunteers and those receiving assistance contribute to making Florence a more caring and connected place to live. And so this program's also a great way for community groups to get involved and make a tangible difference in the lives of their neighbors. We have lots of groups who reach out and who want to do different tasks, but we don't always have tasks available. So this program will allow us to kind of have a list of people who need something done, and when a group does reach out and wants to do something, then we'll be able to connect them quickly. And so how do I get involved? And so there will be two different signup processes. The first process will be the volunteer signup. So there's a QR code that people will be able to scan. If we're not familiar with QR codes, you just hold it down and the website will come up. And so you'll just fill out the information, your contact information, email, kind of what your skills are and what you're willing to do, and then all the volunteers will go into a database, and we'll continue to hold that. And then that leads to the next page for the residents to sign up. Residents will be able to sign up, and once they've signed up, I'll reach out to them just to kind of verify their eligibility for the program and what their needs are. And some, we may be able to identify additional needs pending what they've signed up for through conversation. So then we'll be able to connect them with a volunteer. So the goal would be, you know, for leaf pickup, we would have people be able to rake leaves for them prior and have those at the street, or if somebody has a doctor's appointment and they can't get out because it snowed, we'll be able to have somebody go shovel their driveway so they could get to their doctor's appointment. So hopefully, we plan to have this out by fall before the first leaf pickup, so.
Are there any questions of council?
I love this. It's awesome. Thank you. I was going to ask, you sort of addressed it, when people call you wanting to know how they can get involved, but are we going to proactively send this out to, like, churches in the area and different organizations that might not know about it unless they call? Like, is it something that we can promote?
Yeah, so it'll be on the city's social media, so it'll kind of, it won't roll out both of them at the same time. So first, we'll roll out the volunteers, for people to register as volunteers, we'll do that, and then once volunteers have the time to sign up, then we'll switch and have residents start signing up. So, yeah, it'll go to churches, to different groups, and then also social media, as well as for the residents, we'll take it to the senior center and some of the other local areas where the seniors gather, so that way they can get registered that way, too.
Okay, great. Thank you. So we'll be able to see something like this exact thing on social media that we can share?
Yes. The Good Neighbor Program flyers will go on social media in the next few weeks, and you'll be able to share that.
Yep. This is great. Thank you.
Yep. Sports teams, youth groups, all of those things, we'll be able to sign up to get involved. But the most important is having tasks, once we get the volunteers, is having things for them to do, so.
I think currently we have more volunteers than we have things for them to do.
Tests. Yeah.
Mel?
Thank you. I'm very excited, as well as the rest of us, about the advent of this program. It's exciting. It's a different avenue than we normally go as far as providing services for our residents, and there are people out there that have severe, serious needs, and if we could make a difference, that's great. We look forward to you coming back in a few weeks, few months, and sharing with us what's going on, and the numbers and things like that. That's exciting. Thank you, Katie.
Yeah.
Pat?
I've been involved with a lot of nonprofits over the years and have found that corporations are wonderful partners, because they give their employees time off to volunteer and go help do projects. So that's going to, I think, be very beneficial for us with the number of corporations that we have here in town, and even those that are, you know, located in the industrial park, that kind of thing. I mean, we have a lot of resources to pull from, so I think this is going to be great. And all the churches, I mean, you see them out helping all the time, so that's terrific. Thanks.
Hey, Katie, don't discount the schools, because a lot of them have service hours, and they need to fill those, so that'd be a great avenue, too.
Yeah. Yeah, and we've already had several corporations that I work with monthly, but, you know, we only have so many tasks available, so this will give us the avenue to have different tasks on hand, so when they do reach out for their monthly project, we can say, oh, we have this that can be done today, so.
Yeah, I know when I used to help with PW, so people working cooperatively, we had only so many people that could go for that one day that you went and kind of helped X number of people out, you know, so maybe we'd have 12 or 14 houses that, you know, we'd all split up and go and do the work at. So I think this is great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
This is exciting.
Yeah.
Thank you so much, and thank you for supporting us. I think this is a great step to improving relationships within our city, and also, this seems like a large task for you as well, so I just want to make sure I offer my support if there's anything I can do on a voluntary basis to help you with any of this work.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
So one of the things that you talked about, corporations, I just did want to mention, we did have a group out in our cemetery. Do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, Amazon reached out, and they have a group that likes to do a monthly workday. So they cleaned the headstones at the Florence Cemetery last month, and they're actually going to be returning in September to finish that task. And we've also partnered with the Vineyard, we've partnered with Crossroads to have several workdays, and I think we've already, seven or eight houses in the city have been brought back up to code and have had things repaired. So we've definitely established some really good relationships with the churches and the local organizations, and so this just gives us a way to continue to do that and to already have the projects on hand, because sometimes when people want to do things, we're looking at, you know, what do we have available? And so now we'll be able to just go look and say, Joe needs his gutters cleaned, and so we can give that group an assignment more quickly, so.
Any other comments? Very exciting. Thank you. Next, we have first reading, an ordinance relating to levying of a tax upon real estate and personal property in the City of Florence, Kentucky. Levying tax on all franchises taxable within the City of Florence, Kentucky, specifying payment dates, discounts, and penalties for the franchise tax on financial institutions measured by the deposits and the institutions located within the city, and levying a special tax for the payment of the current service costs for the police and firemen and the county employees' retirement system. How far do I need to read? The whole thing? Okay. This is, this is the ordinance by which the city establishes tax rates and levies for annual taxes. The basic tax leveled for general fund purposes is a tax of 18 and 3 tenths cents, that's .183, per $100 of value on real property, and a tax of 18 and 6 tenths cent, 1.186 per $100 of value on personal property, except for motor vehicles and watercraft, and upon all franchises taxable by the city. In addition, this ordinance levies a tax in the amount of 55 tenths cents, .055, per $100 of value upon all real and personal property, except for motor vehicles and watercraft, and upon all franchises taxable by the city for the purpose of payment of the city's obligation for current service costs for police and firemen in the county's employee retirement system. All of the above-mentioned taxes are due and payable upon final passage and publication of this ordinance. A discount of 2% is allowed for such taxes paid in full by November 1, 2024. Any such taxes remaining unpaid after January 1, 2025, are subject to a penalty of 12% plus interest on the amount unpaid at the rate of 12% per annum from January 1, 2025 until paid. This ordinance also establishes a franchise tax in the amount of 25,000ths of 1%, .025% on all financial institutions measured by deposits in such institutions located in the city. This tax was levied by ordinance number 01896 pursuant to the Bank Franchise and Local Deposit Tax Act. That's KRS 136.575. A 2% discount is allowed against this tax on bank deposits if paid before December 31, 2024. Any such taxes paid after January 31, 2025 will be subject to a penalty of 12% plus interest in the unpaid amount at the rate of 12% per annum from January 31, 2025 until paid. This ordinance establishes corresponding due dates, discounts, and penalties for subsequent years. Do I have a motion to approve? Mr. Wynn and Mr. Carroll, Mr. Carroll, did you want to speak about this?
Yes, I would. We are very fortunate in the City of Florence in that we have a substantial amount of real estate that we can tax. We've also fortunate that we've not been able to, we've been able to not raise taxes, perhaps for 15 years, but at least 12 years, and so we've had a constant tax rate, which is good, particularly when things are going higher and interest rates push things up and appreciation, things like that. So we've actually had the same tax rate for some, I'm going to say 12 to 15 years without looking it up. This is the first year in that period of time that we're actually reducing taxes, and we're going to be reducing taxes by 10 cents on the dollar for the special hazardous duty employees, which is a taxable, tax on personal property. That's the direction we want to go, and in talking about this in our tax hearing and also in our caucus meeting, we seem to have a general consensus that this was the thing to do, and we're looking forward to doing it, and I'm happy to make a motion that we accept this rate.
Anyone else? I do want to clarify that the total tax rate will, is the addition, for real estate property within the city, is the real estate property tax plus the special assessment for police and fire, county employee retirement system service costs, and that total is 2.38. Last year, that amount was 2.46, so that is a drop of 8 cents total. So we do have a motion and a second. We have any other discussion? Roll call, vote, please.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Wynn?
Yes.
Ms. Kemper?
Yes.
Ms. Wingo?
Yes.
Mr. Osborne?
Most definitely, yes.
Mayor, motion passes 6-0.
Oh, I'll gavel at that. Lowering taxes is always a good thing. All right. In the mayor's report, Arbor Day Celebration will be held Saturday, September 21, beginning at 10:00 a.m. It's an event that will be held at Stringtown Park this year at 7340 Burlington Pike. For more information, contact our Public Services Department at 859-647-5416. Our Neighborhood Night Out will be held on Tuesday, September 24, from 5 to 7 at Caniboo Park. There will be food available for attendees. It is a great opportunity to connect with city officials and city personnel. The City of Florence, in partnership with Boone County, will host an end-of-summer concert and fire will host an end-of-summer concert and fireworks show here at the Florence Government Center on September 28, beginning at 6:00 p.m. The Danny Frazier Band will perform. There's also an exciting lineup of events, including food trucks, a kids' activity area, and fireworks to conclude the evening. The event is free to attend. The Florence Police Department will hold their Police Citizens Academy beginning October 9 through December 4. The eight-week class will be held on Wednesdays from 6:30 until 9:00 p.m. The application is available on the City of Florence website. And please contact the City of Florence Police Department at 859-647-5420 for more information. Fall Cleanup Week is scheduled Monday, October 14 through October 20. Drop-off is at Public Services Maintenance Facility that's located at 7850 Tanner's Lane. The cleanup is available for Florence residents only, and you must show proof of residency. Contact the Florence Public Services Department at 859-647-5416 for more information. Upcoming event, the City of Florence Veterans Commission is hosting a two-day Veterans Resource Fair on October 18 and 19 here at the Florence Government Center. On Saturday, October 19, there'll be various veteran-supporting agencies with booths. If you would like to become a vendor, please contact Gray Cliff and the City of Florence Veterans Commission's liaison at 859-647-5416. And the vendor form is on the City of Florence website. And the City of Florence will host our largest event of the year, Annual Halloween Night Out, on Tuesday, October 29 at Thomas More Stadium. That's the home of the Florence Yalls, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. The event will have vendors and treats for kids. It will be a spooktacular, family-friendly event. If you would like to become a vendor, the vendor form is on our website. Contact...
Did you say that?
That's our Halloween Night Out? A spooktacular.
I'm all excited about that.
Spooktacular, family-friendly event. If you'd like more information, contact admin at 859-647-8177. And if you want to note, due to the Neighborhood Night Out next week, there will be no council meeting next week.
Two weeks.
Or two weeks. Two weeks. There will be no council meeting in two weeks due to the Neighborhood Night Out. You can go head over to Caniboo if you want to talk to your local officials there. We have no, let's see, other? Do we have any department heads? Is there recognition? Anyone on council? Leslie?
About eight months ago, a nice gentleman who is part of our skateboarding community came to our council meeting with about 1,000 signatures requesting that the lights that we already have be turned on for a little while after dark. I know there's been some information about, well, we're master planning, and we could lump that all together. But I just wanted to make the comment that it's about to be dark earlier. And these individuals who have proven to be fantastic community members are asking just for a little bit more time to skate in the evenings. And I was just hoping that we could reconsider getting that taken care of sooner.
I don't know what the status of that is. And Eric's not here tonight. I think he's at a seminar. We can get a report back to you. My understanding from polling council is that everyone was in favor of putting lights on the skate park. It's just a matter of working it through. So, let's talk to Eric and find out.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Would make an observation, if I may. We've recently put up a couple of flashing signs in the community, one here on Ewing Boulevard and another one over on Mall Road. I received a total of four comments so far from our citizens, one text and three verbal. People talking about how nice it was, and we're getting more information out that way. And so, it's a nice thing that we can do to move forward in that direction. So, hopefully, more people will notice it.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Anyone in the audience desire recognition?
My name is Nancy Corman. I live at 24 Ridgeu Avenue in Florence. I watched the Florence City Council meeting of August 27, 2024, on the YouTube channel for those unable to attend the meetings in person. No creative editing, no added comments. I viewed it directly from the city's website. Mayor Abashan and Gary Nguyen should be ashamed of themselves for their very obvious, direct, and targeted attack on Angie Cable. Gary Nguyen came armed to the meeting with a prepared statement to discredit her. I believe he should have fact-checked some of his information before publicly attacking her on the record. As citizens of Florence, I feel we have a right to question how and why things are done. The mayor and the council give an illusion of wanting input, of wanting people to be a part of this process and for us to engage. However, citizens are shut down when it doesn't fit the narrative without so much as a discussion. These meetings are supposed to be a safe and open forum for all citizens to share their thoughts for improving the city. We are all different. Our ideas and our beliefs are different. This is what brings new and innovative ideas to the forefront for open discussion and collaboration. If attacks of this nature continue, people will start to keep these good ideas to themselves because they are afraid they will be ridiculed for not following suit. This is the adult version of bullying. People should not be silenced because someone does not agree. All Angie has tried to do is give the citizens of the Florence area a voice for how they use their property. I'm very disappointed about this personal attack on Angie and hope that in the future, the mayor and the council will not do this publicly to anyone again. Good leaders never allow it to become personal, even if it is. Does anybody have any questions for me?
I'm confused at how you think it's personal when Ms. Cable has gone on social media and said very things about me that she has no idea what she's talking about. Personal attacks upon me. I've only spoken to this woman in this room and on a handful of occasions. So, she does not know me. She doesn't know what kind of life of privilege I have led or not led. And she has made this personal. There was nothing personal in what was said, that I said. I didn't say anything to Ms. Cable that was personal. So, I respect you. You've came here, you've always been polite, you've always been respectful. I appreciate you coming and taking the time. I don't agree with your statements, and that's fine. We can agree to disagree. I still think you are a valued member of this community. You've been very active, coming here, meetings, always respectful, always, you know, approachable, talked to the council members. I don't have an issue with that. But just because we are elected officials does not mean that we can be attacked personally. If you don't like our ideas, that's fine. If you don't like that we're paving a certain road or putting a sidewalk in or hiring a certain amount of personnel, that's fine. We absolutely welcome that discussion. Absolutely welcome that discussion. But just because we are elected officials does not mean we are fair game for social media fodder.
And I agree with you on that. I am not defending...
But you are.
What I'm defending is that she was attacked in this open forum.
She came to attack us.
But hers...
So, it's okay for her?
No, it's not.
Okay.
Again, I'm just, I think you guys, I agree. You can sit up there and be really mad about what happened. I'm just not certain that I personally feel like it's okay. If I thought you were going to do that to me, I was nervous about coming here just to say this because...
You've always been respectful. We've had conversations.
I wrote this 25 times.
I appreciate your input.
Yeah. And I tried very carefully. I don't want to defend all actions.